...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome everyone. Hope you're all enjoying this more like fall weather. First up, we have item number three, comments from the audience regarding agenda items. This is a business meeting, so this is the only time the audience can speak. If you would like to come forward and address your comments to the board, we ask that you state your name and address for the record and limit your comments to five minutes. Would anyone like to address the board this evening?
Good evening. My name's Brian Bourne. I'm not a district member, I don't live in the district, but I do teach at the middle school. I'm the dean of students. And tonight, I've come to ask for your continued support of the post-retirement package that you've offered in the past. I understand that over the 30 years that I've been in education here, there's been a lot of changes happening. And we've probably seen the fastest amount of change in the last five years with what's happening in Wisconsin. And the challenge is, how do we still offer more with less? And I think one thing that hasn't changed in our district especially is the hard work and dedication of the staff members and the teachers. And I think the challenge is, the whole compensation thing and how you can be fair with people, how I can do what's best for everybody involved. And I think one solution to that problem was brought out about two years ago by Dr. Holtz and members of the Whitnell community in the reinstatement of the post-retirement package. I think by working on that plan, it was a way that it would be a win-win for not only the district in saving money overall, but also for the retired or retiring faculty. It's true that upfront, this incentive is going to cost the district a little, but after three years, it's going to pay for itself. After three to four years, depending on how the hiring goes, it's going to pay for itself. And after those four years, it's really going to benefit the district. I know that there are concerns about where are we going to come up with funds to maybe increase the salaries of the younger teachers. And I feel that by saving money from the more senior teachers, it'd be a way to pay back or pay to the younger teachers. It would help the incentive program. So I think with longevity, it's a way to encourage longevity in the district. And like I say, I think it's a win-win for everybody involved.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board this evening? Anyone else like to address the board? Seeing none, then we'll move to item four, recognitions. Do we have some recognitions this evening?
I do not believe that he is here, but it was in your board packet that we have a, we got a letter from
Oh, okay.
Scoutmaster in regards to a student, a prior student who graduated from Whitnell this past June. Robert Chase is, has, going to the Court of Honor this week. I think it's the 24th or the 27th of August. And he is achieving his Eagle Scout Award. So we have sent a letter of congratulations and a certificate to a scoutmaster to be presented to him during the Court of Honor ceremony.
So the Eagle Scout project that Fabby Chase was able to accomplish was that he noticed that the fire station in Hills Corners didn't have a sign. And other fire stations have and other buildings do. And so he was able to raise the funds and negotiate with contractors and get a sign built. But the beauty part of it is it's solar operated. So it was, it was a green project as much as it was an informational project, so that they can display different messages out there. And it was really a really nice project to see come and added to the firehouse and quite a bit in the community. So it was a, it was a good thing.
Well, congratulations to Robert Chase and to all his family and all of those involved in the project. We're very proud of them. So thank you. All right. Any other comments? Okay, next up, we have our consent agenda. These items are routine items or procedural decisions that have been discussed previously, and they are voted on with one vote. On the consent agenda tonight, we have A, approval of August vouchers and vouchers payable; B, approval of July 25th and August 8th, 2016 school board meeting minutes; C, approval of seclusion and restraint report; D, approval of parent-paid busing; E, approval of new staff hires; F, approval of staff resignation. But before we vote, would anyone like to pull out any of those items? Seeing none, then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved. Been moved.
Seconded.
And seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Seeing none, motion carries. Next up, we have old business. These are some policies that have been, policy that has been discussed in the past. So discuss and take possible action. A second reading for revised policy 411.2, incidents of expressed bias or discrimination. Does anyone have any comments on any of those?
Was this one that needed a change?
No, that was the one that you didn't suggest any changes at the last meeting. It was just a change and there was no additional suggested change.
You're still working that through then?
Yeah.
All right. So if there are no other comments, then I would entertain a motion to approve the revised policy 411.2, incidents of expressed bias or discrimination. So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Seeing none, motion carries. Next up, we have discuss and take action on 2016-17 preliminary budget. Doug and Lisa.
I will. It's that time of year again when it's necessary to approve what's known as a preliminary budget, so that we can meet the required publication deadline for the budget hearing and annual meeting on September 15th. That means we have to have the budget to the newspaper by September 7th. The budget as presented is balanced, though that's been known to change from time to time. This is by no means a final budget. After the budget hearing has been held and the tax levy set, the board would adopt what's called the original budget. That still is not final because new information that will be available in October would be, could cause us to have to change something. The budget does include $1.4 million as an estimate of the extent to which we might use Act 32 levy authority for energy-saving projects. Lisa Voison provided a couple of charts. She has estimated that our growth in valuation is only going to be about 1.6 percent. So you might recall, recently, we had a chart that showed as much as 1.8 million, but that was based on an assumption of a higher increase in value. I've also included a couple of revenue limit worksheets, so you can see how our rate is expected to drop considerably next year if we would do nothing other than business as usual. In this case, we would be able to keep the current mill rate, or the mill rate for last year, and still add $1.4 million to the levy. So, and this is a rare year. If we were going to use Act 32, this would be a good time to do it. Then I also included the one chart that you've become accustomed to seeing every year, where it's got some historical levy and mill rate information, as well as a projection for a new year. Lastly, in the DPI prescribed publication format, is the budget. There will be a more detailed one that will be used at the annual meeting. But we're asking for approval tonight so that we can get to the publications in a timely manner.
Okay. Questions or comments about the budget?
Doug, is the 150 per student that we got in this calendar year included in here?
Yes. Well, it's 250.
250?
250, right. It was 150 last year. That is included in our...
It was 150? I thought there was nothing last year.
No, there was 150 last year, and it's going to 250 this year. And it is included in the projections.
Okay. Other questions? John, did you have any? No, we're good. All right.
The one thing I would like to point out, and I think at the last meeting, we were talking about summer school and the number of students we actually gained from membership count. And if you look at that historically, it's on there. So you can see the number 12, 13, 14 in terms of FTE students that we get from summer school. But we only get to count that at 40 percent. So you can see the number of students that adds to enrollment. And that gets back to when we plan for summer school in terms of how many, the seat time and the minutes that we get to count, that summer school does add to your FTE in terms of cost. And I don't know how long it's been since there's been a cost analysis on the cost of summer school in terms, as compared to the number of FTE students we gain from summer school, because there's going to be a threshold in which there's actually, is it costing the district money, or is it at least helping in terms of the FTE students and the three-year rolling average for that? So I think that's something to look at. But because that question was raised last meeting, and it's right in front of you, and I thought I would just bring that up there in terms of noting that in the number of FTE students we do get from summers, by having a summer school program, so.
All right. Then if there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the 2016-17 preliminary budget. So moved. It's been moved.
Seconded.
And seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Seeing none, motion carries. Okay. And now we have an update from Compensation Committee. Thank you.
I have something up to read, so. The Compensation Committee has been busy this summer. Since the late spring, we have regained some order within the group by appointing roles to the committee members and welcoming in Dr. Olson, who has been a great advisor to the team. We are moving forward with a compensation plan that will be similar that we've been working on last year, but will be based on teachers' professional improvement by incorporating Danielson model used in the evaluation cycle of educator effectiveness. It will reward teachers for progressing as professionals. This will positively affect teachers' classroom instruction and motivate teachers to continue to develop their skills and capabilities. There will be more details in the future of our compensation model, but we would like to ensure that the plan is close to completion before we share the details with the board. Going forward, we would like to bring our ideas to the teachers at the August Institute and allow some feedback for upcoming meetings. We would also like to distribute a survey to the staff specifically regarding what other benefits might interest them in their overall compensation. Their feedback will help guide us as we move to the compensation plan closer to completion. A complete plan should be available for review by the middle of the school year, with the goal of having the plan in place for the 2017-2018 school year.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you. Compliments to all of you for all the extra hours and time you're putting in. And we look forward to the final report when you're ready. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Joe.
All right. Next up, we have preliminary, under new business, Preliminary Strategic Planning Process Review. In your packet, you've got a description of the potential level for work of the board coming up. And Dr. Olson has presented us with some process. And we had, at our workshop, our recent workshop, we talked about the need for updating our strategic plan and reviewing our mission, vision, those kinds of things. And then, in addition, we had talked about getting additional information on what does the public see our graduates need when they leave. So that was what we were talking about doing. So we've given you a draft here of the process and some questions that we could go out and ask. We're working on some training for the facility, training documents for the facilitators. Comments or questions about this particular process?
When's it starting?
Well, fall. Soon as we can get approval.
I mean, we'd have to come through the next board and we'd approve it, so realistically it could start as soon as it's approved, right?
Yeah, so this process in terms of getting that, I guess, I'm still getting this to the two-meeting thing, so trying to do that. But this was supposed to, I think we talked about at the workshop, having a process to garner that. And so this sort of having some structure. So you saw some, what I would say, pretty guiding questions in terms of leaving it pretty open and not dictating that, and still keeping the possibility of having a survey as a follow-up once we, from the feedback in terms of gathering that, if we realize that we have to ask specific questions because we're hearing that, if we actually wanted to get some quantitative results as follow-up from what we're hearing from people. So, you know, a common phrase in here is the kitchen table discussion, hearing people. And then if we wanted to say, we didn't really get a lot of feedback from this group of people, community people, senior citizens, middle school parents, whatever it is, then it allows for focus groups. And then from their survey, to be able to give us some data to move forward with. So it outlines a process, giving a little bit more structure to what we talked about at the workshop, gives you some ideas of what questions would be, just so you could look at that, in terms of that. So it would be as soon, I think to Jonathan's point, as soon as the board approved it, you could start that. I did send out an email to the advisory committee, and I've heard back from many of them who said, "Sign me up. I'll do whatever I can. I really believe in that." So I think that we'll have some folks in terms of, who are willing to go through that process and gather feedback and that. So I think that this was to just give you an outline of a structure, a little bit more than we talked about at the last workshop, so you could know what it would look like and what types of questions. Because I think that was still a big question up there until we had a little bit more detail, what do we do? So this is starting to fill in some of those gaps, if you will.
Well, then again, do we have to approve this?
No, that's what I was wondering. Do we have to approve this? As far as I'm concerned, I think we can move it forward based on...
Right. It was a discussion. If people are okay with it, because it does, I mean, there's no cost to it. There's no, in terms of that, it's a process, really. You're not taking any action on...
And we can always adjust it as we go, if need be. So why don't we just?
Move it forward.
Yeah, move it forward.
Yeah, that's what I was going to recommend that we do. And, you know, you've got a chance to look at the questions. If you have any further feedback, even after tonight, you can just email those to us, because it is a living, breathing document, and let us know. Otherwise, we'll just keep moving forward then with lining up facilitators and locations and people to go out and start listening. And then, again, the next, there's still other steps here to be defined as we go, the survey piece and focus groups. There's two other pieces that we just haven't worked on, all the details on. But if this looks good, we'll get started.
I think like Dr. Olson said, yeah, this is a great starting point. So thank you for all the time.
Nancy?
I do have one question. How long do you think that these sessions would last? I mean, I know it's based on the number of questions that people have, but I mean, do you have some kind of an idea?
You know, I think it decides on how many people you put in a group, because obviously if you get larger groups versus if you have, you know, six people in a group, you could get done with them, I think, easily in an hour. But if you end up having 20 or 25 to a group, you know, because you want to give everybody a voice, it probably is going to be closer to an hour and a half or so. So I think that that would be in terms of the structure of how many people are in the group.
Okay.
Yeah. And these are more brainstorming sessions, so it's not like we have to reach consensus and have a big debate at these meetings. We really, we just want to hear all ideas and then look for common themes across the different groups. And we will have ground rules set up for the meetings that lay that kind of thing out, so.
By the board.
Okay.
Are you just now hearing me?
Yep, yep.
Okay, I don't see a reason for an approval process by the board. You're just laying out a process by which you'd like to solicit feedback. I mean, it seems reasonable to me, and I appreciate the work you did on it.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up, we have Preliminary Facilities Planning Review. And I think that's just an outgrowth of the additional conversations. Dr. Olson, you want to take us through a little bit of an update on that?
Sure. So we had, we had started to at the workshop, talked about what we're going to do with the recommendations from the advisory committee. We'd started to talk about that, what that looks like in terms of trying to find funding sources for some of the facility needs, specifically the ones that have been identified in the previous referendum, and then also identified again by the advisory committee. We had some initial conversations on that. So this is an opportunity for public discussion in terms of that, and input that folks have. Later on, you'll see an item that could be taken, potential action, which would be if, if, if the board wanted to move forward with any of those, the next part. And moving that process forward with the three items that were specifically identified in terms of facilities would be to send out RFPs to engage the service of an architectural firm. And we can talk about that later, but that's really the action item associated with this. But this is an opportunity for board members to have any public discussion on the facilities piece, or what we heard last time from the advisory committee, the Citizens Advisory Group to us, so.
I'll just, I'll just add to that, that based on their recommendations, that's why we're doing also the additional step of strategic planning, actually making that first, to paint a bigger picture with our community about the future and engaging them in that way. And then how does facilities fit into that? So just wanted to mention that. Go ahead.
No, I'm comfortable with moving forward with the RFP, so they can start that process.
All right. Any other comments or discussion? If not, then we'll move to item C, discuss and take possible action on soliciting RFPs for the architectural services.
I'd like to thank Matt for working with me and putting together the proposal. One of the recommendations from the committee was to strongly consider a design-build process. And so it's a process, it's not a people thing, and I want to be, and I think Matt clarified that for me, in making the difference for that. So the RFP actually is for architectural services. Who would respond to that RFP would decide later if the process is design-build. So if there are companies that do everything from architectural all the way through that, and we would solicit them to put in a bid for the architectural piece versus those that are only architectural firms, and then we would have to later grow out for a CM. So some of those firms, so we'd make sure that the RFP would go to both of those. So this doesn't say, doesn't preclude people who aren't either way from doing it, so it would go to just purely architectural firms. It would also go to those firms that are full service, if you will. But the RFP at this point is just for architectural services. And so in the way that they would price that and get that back to us in terms of bids, it would include that. And they would have, the way that they do a price structure, they would include how that would be if they offer CM, construction management services, versus if they only did that and how that would work. So we'd be able to tell that. And that could be a determination in reviewing and accepting those RFPs at Finance Committee, bringing them forward here. But this is just to go out for bid approval for that, it's not to accept that. But I just wanted to be clear, because I know there was a strong feeling from the committee to consider design-build as part of the process, and this allows for that, if that makes sense, so.
So my question is, if we, would we be approving in one step then, potentially, a design-build group? Or are we going to have to come back to the board with a second CM vote?
Design-build is a process, it's not a company.
Right. I know. But what, so that's where it gets a little tricky for me, because my experience is you approve that together, not separate.
What do you mean?
You, you, sorry. You approve that together. Otherwise, you're saying you're going to pick a, you could, you could pick a firm that could do both, but we would have to come back to the board again for the second vote, right?
Right, right. Because historically, we have architect, CM.
I know.
And so that has been a historical model. And that's, that's really the direction that we need to stay on, because it will allow us to have more flexibility. We're going to go out for pure architectural services. We're going to have planning meetings, and we're going to get building program. We're going to get closer to a set of drawings that then could be handed off to a construction firm for bidding purposes. The same, like Lisa said, just to reiterate, the same firms that we would be soliciting to for construction management services could also be a design builder. We're not going to exclude one or the other in the process. But we have to, but we have to kind of start at the top and build down from there. Otherwise, having that person in too early, the design builder, we're not there yet in the, in the district. So we need to, we need to focus on program, you know, how we're going to be using the space with, you know, brick and construction, those type of things, and then go out for the brick and mortar, numbers and things like that.
Well, my understanding of design-build, though, is that if you're doing it together with an architect and a builder at the table, the same firm.
Correct.
They can give you those numbers right away.
Correct. But we need to know, we need to know, we need to know why we want to build the building we want to build.
True under design-build.
So that's, that's...
True under design-build.
Well, of course, but that's more, that's more like the physical space size that we're going to be bidding on, the materials in the construction, what kind of valves are going to be going in the wall. That's the more design-build side. Upfront, we need to talk about what kind of school we're going to be building, or what kind of...
Yeah. I know, but it's not, the design-build means they're going to design and build it.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're not precluding that. We're not saying that that might not be an option.
No, because an architect is designing it. We're going to go out for, forgive me for arguing this, but this does not feel like what, what we were looking for. And let me finish.
Okay, go ahead.
The architect and the builder are in it together. What we're doing is having an architect do it, and then we're going to go out for construction management. It's not a design-build-together process.
But when they come...
Can I try to help you?
Yeah, go ahead.
What you're looking at first here, Matt, is a conceptual part.
Yes.
Right.
So all you want to do now is this very first part, just the concept.
Okay.
So if you break that out...
Okay. Then we'll come back to do both designer. Okay, I got it.
And it's not the architecture, you know, of the whole project.
Okay. We will still need more architectural...
Develop a concept here.
Correct.
Yeah. Who does the final steps? This is just to give the concept, to know what we're even looking at in terms of whatever.
Got it. Get down. I give, your hand down.
The product, yep, the product. Well, that's okay. But since we're endeavoring to do this, the product from this RFP, if you will, would be a set of drawings, a bid set or a early construction set, that then in turn could be handed over to a design builder, who then could take these drawings and do what design builders do, which would be to find the value in, in the work.
Okay.
So...
They're not going to be final architect.
Okay.
Right. And I'll, and I'll, just to be completely honest with you, too, most architectural firms will have subcontracting and consulting engineers underneath them that they're bringing in to do these evaluations. So, and at that point, that's where the design builder is, may or may not have, you know, an advantage in the process, I was...
Okay.
I have a question. So this board doesn't know what we want, correct? So how would you know how to ask for a concept?
Well, what we're going to do is we're going to ask in the RFP for architectural services. And Dr. Olson, myself, I'm sure maybe Dr. Brzezinski would be working with that team to get that building vision, and then...
What building? We haven't agreed to anything.
Well, when I say, when I use the word building, I'm used, when I say building, it can be in physical building, but we're building, constructing.
But what are we, building and constructing? You haven't gotten a charge from the board.
What are we building and constructing?
Yeah, you haven't gotten a charge from the board.
Well, we're going to, I don't have the memo in front of me, but the Citizens Advisory Committee has talked about building and constructing in addition at Hills Corners Elementary. So...
Thirty thousand square feet, kind of thing. I mean, I don't know if you're that...
So it'd be roughly based on the advisory committee's recommendations, those options they gave us? It'd be roughly based on that?
Right.
So right now, just to clarify, I think where Luanne was going to is, this is a very, we have to move the idea of the concepts of what we're doing into rough architectural things, so the board can look at that and say, heck no, don't agree with that. Heck yes for this, and then move it forward. It's got to start somewhere, and you can't just go to final architectural drawings. We haven't even decided if we wanted a condo or an apartment or a two-story or a ranch yet. We have to get that, and then we can pick apart the plans from there. So we have to at least have the next step of taking the concepts, the options. So we're going to ask them to put all of the concepts that they put there. Two options for Hills Corners, two options for a pool, and the one option for the high school. We're even putting that in there, just to say, give us some things. Then we'll take, then this board will take a look at that, decide then what actually goes out for that next process, for final architectural design-build and all of that stuff.
Good.
It's the next step in the process, because without anything more than what the committee presented, you couldn't make a decision right now. That's the problem, is that there's not enough information to take the next leap into, here's our final drawings.
Okay.
I think that's what was missing at the last time, to be able to vet that through a little bit.
We are needing to approve the RFPs. This will go above 15,000, correct? We're not sure.
There, technically, this process does not cost, because all you're doing is going out to RFP.
Oh, correct. Yeah. It's the final decision.
Correct, right.
We're just giving them the authorization to go out and start.
Got it. And, and in terms of that, would have we needed to come to the board for approval to go to RFP? No. But in terms of making a public statement that you're moving the process along is the reason why this is actually coming here. So it doesn't need to be roll call in terms of that, because there's no money outlay at this time. It's just in terms of a statement that you're making that you're moving the forward, or the process forward.
And they're asking that we approve this tonight, so that they can move the RFP process forward. So any other?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Seeing none, motion carries. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Jeanie. Thank you, Jeannie, and the committee. Thank you, Dr. Olson, and everyone else. Okay, next up, we have Discuss and Take Possible Action on 2016-17 District Goals.
So I provided a little bit of background from what I have. You all have been here much longer than I am in terms of what we're looking at here. And so the question, there's a couple of things that are there, is as far as engaging on a strategic planning process that builds a little bit more detail into that, wanted to provide some structure in terms of what we're working on annually right now. And so as staff are reporting Friday, we'd like to start out the school year with what is it that we're actually working on? So the background is in your packet in terms of putting something in tangible things. You see the four strategies that are there that have been approved. We're not asking to change vision, mission, strategies. We're asking to add some annual goals to that. And so you see that there is at least one goal per strategy that's there. It gives you some measures of success that are related to that. So I'm more than happy to go through each of those, if you would like, or answer questions in terms of that. This proposal also, in terms of action, asks to revise the mission statement, so it grammatically makes sense. Because right now, it's saying that we are only addressing certain types of folks, if you go back and read that mission statement. So I'm asking to modify that instead of who, but to become and that. And then these annual goals are what we're going to measure and report back on, and the Academic Achievement Team and all of those folks also are working at that. I've talked with Admin Team, and this makes sense to them in terms of their work and aligning it there, so.
Okay, questions? My compliments to you and the staff. I think that this is maybe the first time that we've approved them in August, and it feels great to be kicking this off. And of course, it's, I don't see anything new in here. I'm, as I look at, I just want to comment on Goal One. I mean, I really feel like we're moving personalized learning forward. This is to develop a roadmap and a timeline, but we really have made progress on that. So it's a journey, and I'm looking forward to, and getting a little more clarity myself, because I do talk about that goal in the public a lot, which is what I'm understanding that is very important in highly, high achieving districts, is that we all know what the goals are, and we can now all talk about them with some clarity. So I'm looking forward to that timeline on that goal.
To your point, there is a change, though, the change in the mission statement.
Tonight? No, no, no.
That's what she just said.
Yeah. Oh, you want that tonight changed?
Well, grammatically, if you read it.
It's saying that you only engage the ones who embrace challenges.
It says who embrace, it says, it should be to embrace. Otherwise, it's saying we're only engaging certain types of learners.
So I would say that I would push the motion to make that change. Right?
Correct. I think on the cover page there, it's got current and suggested. In bold, I have those two propositions that need to be changed to make it make sense.
What's the?
Well, we're noticed to take action on the district goals.
But that's part of it. That's built into it.
So we can just approve the district goals, and this gets approved? I don't see two votes here.
No, we don't need to.
Right, one approval of the district goals, which includes the grammatical change.
The motion to approve.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded? Any others? John? Yeah?
So on the, on the mission statement, that's bothered me since it came out, and this, your suggestion is basically identical to what I've thought of for years, but I would have left out the second two, so it just said, we're engaging learners to embrace challenges and become responsible. I don't know if you want to consider leaving that second two out or not. I think it just seems more wordy than necessary, just a little bit.
That's fine.
But I, overall, I greatly appreciate the change.
So now we're approving it without the two?
The second two.
The second two? That's all okay, everyone's going yes. There's been a moved and a second. And if there's no other discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
And opposed, seeing none, motion carries. All right. Next up, we have Discuss and Take Possible Action on Pursuing a Post-Retirement Benefit Plan, Dr. Olson.
So, sure, so you see the, on, on here what we're recommending at this time, a little bit of background in terms of where this is. It's been talked about at Finance Committee, at least since I've been here for the last two, in the joint committee meetings, in terms of that. So this just puts things in a historical perspective that highlights what the criteria were, when the Board reinstated it, and what's being done. I think I've listed for you, but for the benefit of folks here, I am going to talk about the concerns right now that we have administration in talking about it. Right now, the phrase that one was reinstated, the term early retirement, has been used in terms of this plan. It's not clear on what the phrase early retirement means, or what that's defined. There is no end age to that. People have talked about what they believed it is, but right now, it's not in writing as to what, when would early retirement end. We have folks who are clearly beyond, honestly, we have people beyond the age of seventy, but yet are continuing on this list of that. So right now, the term early retirement is unclear to us in terms of moving that forward and defining it. So that's one of the concerns that we have with the way that it currently is. Second of all, the formula that's used right now in terms of calculating it is extremely cumbersome and is sort of a moving target. It's based on various variables, and those move, and those are hard to calculate and predict, and honestly, budget for the way that it's calculated right now. So the formula is complicated. The third one, it was unclear when it was brought in, there was a list when it originally was brought back, and each year, we are adding more teachers to that list. It's unclear as to when we would stop adding, you know, are we supposed to be calculating out? So it's not clear as to if there's an endpoint, if there's a sunset piece to it, or when does this, you know, because once you become eligible, you're on the list until you actually decide to leave the district. So at what point do we stop adding? Because it still could be fifteen years beyond when they get added, to when we actually pay it out. So right now, there's no, there's no clarity to us as folks get added to it. And the last one really is, because the Board decided when they brought it back in that they would annually approve it, it makes it difficult for teachers. I mean, they're waiting annually to decide, is this something that's going to be done? So that always puts us a little bit at a risk, or teachers making decisions, you know, life-changing decisions, until that annual vote is taken whether or not we're going to continue it. So those are our concerns administratively administering that. We've talked about, so those are just the way that it's currently written. And I guess, as you can see, you know, talking mostly with Doug, in our recommendation at this point, and out of our conversations at the committee meetings, is that right now, our recommendation is that the Board needs to, they should develop something that's sustainable as a post-retirement benefit program, that allows some type of annual contribution for each teacher, of which that annual amount is determined and controlled by the Board annually, so you can look at the fiscal situation each year, but at least there's a commitment. I think it's in terms of that. And that it would also, the plan that put into place would be a plan that would incentivize longevity at the same time. So those are some of the things, I think, as you heard earlier, about the Compensation Committee looking at it. So we can do those, but it needs to be fiscally responsible, it needs to have a plan in place. And right now, that makes it very challenging for us to do, for the reasons that have already been stated. So there is not a final plan in front of here, but our recommendation at this time is that the Board take action to have administration develop that and bring that back to them in terms of that. But before we put into all of the research of what that was, we wanted to make sure that that's what that direction was.
Okay, comments? Questions?
I do.
Quinn.
I think that we made a mistake in not put the end date to the certified teacher. Must be fifty-five, and it should be fifty-five to sixty-two, in my opinion, because this is what the three years of insurance money, and then we, then we took the insurance out, it made it just a lump sum, lump sum was to get that person to, possibly to Medicare or Medicaid, I'm not sure, I'm not old, that old yet, so.
It looks like I was.
No. But I'm uncomfortable taking this away and not having it. I, this is the first I've heard that the formula is cumbersome and uses all the, all those words in there that you use. In the previous two years, I have not heard that. No one, the previous superintendent never said that. Doug hasn't said that. Not saying it's not true, but that hasn't been brought to us that way, as has the number three. So I would be, I'd be willing to change the certified teacher must be fifty-five and no older than sixty-two, or however you word that. But I think we do need to have something in place until we come up with a different plan, I'm not saying better. I, I, I remember reading and seeing, going through all the stuff and how it was all laid out for us, and, and I know we're getting a little skittish right now, because there is upfront costs, and those are debatable as what they were, or what they are. But I think that we should, in my opinion, continue with this plan until we have something else in place.
I don't, so I don't think she's asking that we not. Do you want me to stop?
Yeah, she's asking that we not do this plan, that we give them.
No, 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 no.
She's asking that we send it back.
Well, she's right here, why didn't she say?
Yeah, so, I mean.
She will answer.
What are you asking?
She can speak. I'm asking at this point that it's neither, it's to put together a plan that will continue some type of sustainable benefit. It's not saying that it, yes, will not do what looks like now, or will, but in the change that you just suggested, Quinn, would be a change in what currently is offered. So to say to continue with what we have would not be what you just suggested either. So what I'm saying is that we can, in the next month, put together, we've done some background, but since the committee met only a week ago, we were not able to, like here, we talked with our benefits consultants, we did a survey of our districts. Joe found a survey that was done most recently of our district, so we had something, but in that short a time, between Monday and Thursday last week to get it in a board packet, we couldn't formulate a plan about what would that be. Give us a few more weeks, and we could put an alternative. So this is to be able to say that we're going to come up with an alternative plan versus not have any plan.
And who's we?
Administration will bring it back to the Board for review, or to the Finance Committee, if you want it, whatever that would be in terms of personnel, Finance Committee, and looking at that. This is just to take action that there will be something, but it, there's got to be changes to what currently is there.
Have you discussed this with the Compensation Committee? I thought I heard that you had brought this to the Compensation Committee?
We talked about how we could put longevity, that was a conversation as we were talking about the topic of longevity, in terms of a salary schedule, how we need to take the concept of longevity and move it into some post-retirement benefit piece of it.
Okay.
If I can, at the meeting, we said that we didn't want it to be lumped in with Compensation Committee, because then it would drag out the process, and we wouldn't be able to get something in place this year. So we wanted to take it separate. It would be reviewed long-term with the Compensation, but we want to get something agreed upon this year. So the thought is now, are we all in favor of having something this year? We'll still decide what that is over the next two months, before we need to notify the teachers.
So you're just asking us to hold tight? Your, the administration's working on something, and you'll have it back to us in time for the people that may.
Yeah.
Want to.
Right. So this is saying, we agree that we are going to continue with it in some type of plan to be determined, versus, no, we are deciding to end it today. That would be the vote that you're taking today.
Correct.
No details yet, but in order for us to move forward with the details, to invest the time in coming forward with options, we need to make sure that was a direction that the Board wanted to go, as talked about at the Finance Committee.
Or to not have any.
Correct.
We could vote it down in time.
Correct, and that would be, then we would not invest all the time and effort in bringing together options. That's really what this decision is, is tonight.
John's going to go, and then I'll get to you. John?
Okay, so a couple of things. First off, I think we should look at options, but that doesn't mean that what we're doing now is necessarily, that it's either, don't do anything, or consider options. I think, I see no problem with presenting us with some options, but we still have a plan that we're, what, two years through where we're supposed to pay, start paying back at four? So we're like, not necessarily sure we're giving this one a full chance to come to fruition. However, if the numbers are taking us off the tracks, then maybe we can't go through the full four thing to see. I don't know, we've got to look at new numbers to, to process that out. But I also don't see a problem with, with going through the effort to come up with something that might be more sustainable if this isn't. On the other, but by the same token, this is not on as an action item, it's on as a reference. So I don't think that it's something that we can vote on tonight.
No, they want us to vote on it tonight.
It's Discuss and Take Possible Action.
Right.
Well, every one of them says Discuss and Take Possible Action, but it's listed as a reference, not as an action item.
Well, that's not true. Only three of them do, and we, we took action on the other two, John. So this was intended to take action tonight. Now, we don't, we can vote it down, if you're not comfortable. But it was, it was a chance for the Board to say, yea or nay? Are we going to continue with any sort of retirement plan? Not any specific plan?
Then I think it needs to be listed as an action item. Maybe I don't understand how you are.
I think you're talking about the checkmark at the top.
It's listed under New Business.
Discuss and Take Possible Action.
Under New Business.
Under New Business.
Okay, look, if you look at Page seventy-eight, which is the last page of the seventy-eight page packet, it's listed as a reference item. That's all I'm talking about. I just don't know where we are legality in our process. I don't want to debate all that, I'm just pointing out what we have on our own page. But the bottom line is, I don't see any problem with folks looking over possibilities. But we do have a plan that was looking at four years for payback, and we're only a couple of years into it, so I wonder exactly if we'd be doing ourselves due diligence by cutting it short. But there's no reason not to look at that options.
Okay, hold on one second. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, John, to your point, those two, the two we've already offered, we're not changing those. So we would still see those through, to fruition. It would be if we continue to offer that to new groups going forward.
Okay.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
All right.
And I think the hard part of it in our terms is that it's hard to budget for one that's going to fall forward. And if we are going to move forward with any type of post-retirement benefit, it would be to our benefit to set up some type of OPEB thing, because it's, it's hard for us to predict. Right now, there's a list of teachers who are eligible, they could all decide this year, or they could all wait ten more years. And from a budgeting standpoint, that's a really challenging piece. So if we're going to continue it, it would be better to start setting aside to, to budget for it. That's the biggest element in here, is that the unpredictability of the way that it is, because that amount, Quinn, to your point, changes annually, because it calculates multiple averages, is what it does. So it's not like I can't do math, or Doug can't do math in terms of complicated, but it makes it hard to, it's a moving target in terms of the amount of money that we budget. It's not like some plans are, that after so many years of service, here's a finite amount of dollars, like you get fifty thousand dollars. Then we can budget for that, we can count the number of people. can help the number of people. But then, the amount of money that people get for every more year of service, the formula keeps changing in two of the three variables, so we have to continually recalculate it, and it comes up with a moving target of dollars. That's the part that, in terms of, of what that looks like.
Well, I, I understood those points, but the one, the biggest thing to me on this is, at least that I see right now, is that we want to incentivize folks to stick around, not incentivize folks to leave. And, but we don't want them to feel trapped. So if you can come up with something that, that everybody's happy with, that incentivizes folks to stick around, but, but still, you know, is reasonable if they leave early, then, I mean, see what you can come up with, is what I say.
And I think that was the alternative. This did provide a vehicle to incentivize people to stay, rather than feel, feel like they're forced to stay, because you can use this in terms of rewarding them in that way. So I think it, that's what I would call a true win-win right now. I, I don't know that it's set up that way, in terms of other way, because you can predict it, you can budget it for it, and we know it's there. Right now, people are going on an annual basis, not knowing whether or not it's going to be there. So.
So that's my question. If, how does it change, so it's not voted on every year? Is that, you're recommending there's a way to do that? Otherwise, how do we know we can afford these at all in the future? We, we can't say right now.
Right.
We're going to have money to incentivize teachers to leave early.
Well, I want to be careful.
Even though that's not the goal.
Right. So what I would say is, I would never recommend calling it an early retirement plan. I'm going to call it a post-retirement benefit package. There's a difference. This is not supposed to incentivize people to leave early. There's a very big difference. And we're talking about, and that's to John's point. This is a post-retirement benefit package. And it's guaranteed, and if you looked at our recommendation, it was, the board annually determines the amount that goes in. So if one year, you're like, oh my God, we just can't, and other years, we can. You're still controlling it, but because you're doing a pay-as-you-go, it's there. That doesn't go away. Right now, it's, if I would have left last year, I could have gotten X number of dollars. This year, I get zero. There is no guarantee for any teacher, the way it goes. So if you go back to, we're going to pay into that, and it's at least there, and even if at some point in the future, some future board has to not pay in anymore, at least X amount is there, and it was there. It's not like it was a promise that you have to pull away from them. It's a true pay-as-you-go program. That's the part right now, is that.
We can get there.
Yeah, correct. Correct.
All right. Any other?
So, you know, I agree, we didn't have an early retirement defined, you know, the dates. And I also agree that the formula is very difficult, and I'm thinking maybe that was by design, I'm not sure. But, but it is very difficult, because you can't point to one specific thing on how we're doing this. It's a combination of multiple, of multiple items. So I think it is difficult. I do have to agree with John that I don't know if we are to vote on this. This is listed as a reference and a discussion. It's not listed as an action item, and it says, the recommendation is that the board should develop a sustainable post-retirement benefit program. It also, we have, the board has not determined if it will approve the early retirement program for 2016-17. So whatever we, we think we're voting on tonight is not that.
Correct.
And I, I don't think we should vote on anything. I think it's a great idea for administration to come back with some other options for us to look at, and then.
And that was really the point of this, without us putting in all of that piece of it. It was a discussion point to say, because if people were opposed to it, then we're like, we're holding off, and next week, or next meeting, we're going to vote, and we're going to. But if it's like, no, we at least want to see that. It was to move, move it forward either way, before we weren't just making some assumptions, in terms of what the board wanted, and moving the conversation from committee to the, to a, to a board meeting, to decide where the direction is.
So, is that acceptable to everyone, unless there's strong feelings to not move anything forward? All she's asking for is direction from us, to move it forward. And we don't have to take formal action on that, but we all say, we would like to see something. And our, I just want to mention that our, we don't, our timetable is by October, so that we can get the paperwork rolling. So we really have time to bring back something we can concretely vote on. So, and not to belabor the, I just want to agree with several of the points you made about, I guess I would agree with Nancy on, this is too complicated. It's not saving the district money, and we can't predict. We just can't take that risk. But finding something that works would be great. Okay, so if we're all okay with that, no other final comments, then I think, Dr. Olson, you have your direction?
Yep, I do.
Now, formal votes, but thank you all, and I look forward to seeing something come back then, when you've got it ready. All right, next up, comments from the school board regarding items for future consideration? Does anyone have a future agenda item?
I'd just like to see some new pictures on the school website. We've kind of been looking at the same ones for forever.
All right.
That's one of the district goals, if you saw that on major website.
Yeah, that's on there, I saw it.
I know, it's the overall, I'm just saying, maybe in the meantime.
Right. And then, how about any board member announcements?
I, I have one. So I went to the football game on Friday at West Alice, and the student section was phenomenal. I mean, there was more students there from Whittenall than there was from West Alice, which was great to see. And there was a ninety-minute lightning delay. Most of the kids waited it out. It was ultimately postponed till today. And I just got a text that they won, sixteen and out.
Oh, congratulations, Whittenall.
So, great job, Chris Quinlan, for your first win as a varsity football coach, and be exciting start to the season.
Even with our umbrellas, we got soaked. It was a great, it was a great night, though. Too bad. I'm glad we won. Great news. Any other announcements?
Well, September first is the start of a new school year, so whether our students are ready or not, we are. And I hope it's a good, a good start to the year, and looking forward to the superintendent's report, to see how that first couple of days went.
Awesome. And we have the Whittenall block party coming up here, September, don't, I don't know.
Ten.
The tenth. So make sure you're all there, and let's get some good weather for that.
And this Friday, we have a back-to-school tailgate at the high school.
Awesome.
Starting at five o'clock, leading up to the first home game.
That's great. All right.
John has one.
John?
Yeah, and I just, I don't think you saw my hand in time at the beginning of meeting, but I just wanted to recognize Bobby Chase also, for his Eagle Scout thing, and remember that his, his Eagle Scout honoring will be on August twenty-seventh.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other announcements? Seeing none, then, I would entertain a motion to adjourn, oh, we have a new one here, to close session. Let me get to the right agenda. Hang on a second. I got it here. Motion to adjourn to close session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five-one CE, to discuss, A, administrator contracts, B, support staff post-retirement, C, review of financial contract and pub, public-private partnership agreement. I would entertain a motion.
Someone?
Who's the seconded? Roll call vote.
Stay.
Aye.
Aye.
Me, aye.
Aye.